It works out to $22 per participant. One, we're only anticipating the 400 numbers based on 700 kids this year projected, and we never anticipated a $110 fee. I have a letter from the city that we received in December that stated the city was going to put this out to bid, and that they were going to try to keep the fees the same although not guaranteed. If anybody wants to see the letter, it's right here. Our fees last year were $70. I think any business, any person would say that going from $70 per field prep to $165 is outrageous.
You have 30 seconds.
Okay. Well, I'll just hand it off to somebody else if I run out of time. The impact of this change is easier calculated per game. It's a $95 increase with 24 kids per game times 12 games. That's a 47-50 increase per kid. Bottom line, we're going to have to increase our fees by over $50 next year if this stands, and it's going to probably keep kids out of the program. And you're going to have a lot of angry parents, and I'll just say when they ask us why our fees have gone up, we'll tell them why. Because this is going to be why.
Okay, thank you. Sorry. Stop, stop. I don't know why it wouldn't stop. Okay, thank you again. Tara Ferris.
You want to grab the mic? Yeah. You can pull it out.
And again, your name and address.
That's all right.
Hello? Hi. I'm Tara Ferris, W210 SA349 Fireside Court. I've been a Mesquite resident for 10 years, and I love this place. This is a great place to raise your kids and your family, and part of the reason that is, is because of all the great programs that we have. We all pay a lot in taxes, and I think that the schools and the programs that we have reflect that. One of my sons plays select baseball. He's fortunate enough to be talented enough to actually make a team. What the MAA does is it allows kids that either aren't strong enough baseball players to actually play baseball in the summer, like I think all little boys and girls should be able to do. And secondly, it affords kids an opportunity that are very structured and have time commitments from other sports to just have some fun and do something a little bit light. And I'd really hate to see the fees go up for this program so much that kids can't do that. Part of the reason that we have such a strong high school team is because it all starts with the MAA, right? This is where kids get their start, and if we don't have that and kids get financially pushed out of that, you're going to see our high school program suffer because of that. So, that's it.
Thank you very much. Heidi Sariano? Seri, am I saying it right? I know you, Heidi. Can you get the microphone? No, she has to get it close to her. Oh, there is it off. Just, everybody should leave it on.
Leave it on, okay. My name is Heidi Sariano, and I live at W128 S8781 Harrington Court. My family and I, we have lived here for 20 years. Part of the reason that we chose to live in Mesquite was because of the family environment. My son started at MAA, and he is now playing select baseball. I actually was amazed at the program when we started. I'm amazed at how many kids actually play baseball and softball, and I'm really concerned about the increase in costs because I just think it is such a great program, and I don't want to see kids not be able to do it when they're young and try something when they're young and not have it be this huge expense. And I agree, I think this is going to affect the community, and if people aren't offered this opportunity here, they're going to go elsewhere, and I don't want to see that happen. I think this is a great, like I said, a family environment, and it's a great opportunity for kids. And I guess what I would really like is, I just heard about this about a week ago, and I would like to get all the facts on what exactly has occurred, what bids have gone out, and what has been done to try to keep these costs down. And I really want more of the community to really know what those facts are, and I don't know exactly how that is, but I just think there's so many things going on and all kinds of information being given, and I'm struggling to find out what exactly is it going to cost a kid to play baseball? How much is it going to increase? And why are some of these bids so high? And how were we able to do it before, and how can we do it in the future? So, I just would like to really see that we look for different solutions and just defer the vote right now.
Thank you. Okay, Greg Shale?
All right. Greg Shaw, South 77, West 16852 Bridgeport Circle. I'm a Mesquite resident, 11 or 12 years. I'm going to take a little different approach at this. I understand that the contract has already been bid, so I understand redoing the contract probably is not an option. I have, give you a little viewpoint. I have three kids that play ball. One son, MAA, one son Warrior, one daughter was Storm. This would be a great time for all of us to maybe come together, but let's not kid ourselves that's not going to happen. We're all too stupid as parents to do that. So, the win-win here could be Happy Mower, I believe, is the winner of the contract. Let them have the contract as-is. Ask them, I believe they're a Mesquite business, if my understanding is correct, ask them if they would pluck out that part of the contract for field prep. The Warriors, I believe, we can do the field prep ourselves. I believe the Storm can do it, and with some work, MAA can probably do it. They're maybe not prepared this year, but we can all get together and get that done. Happy Mower retains their contract. This is over with for you guys. We don't get the increased fees passed along to us. I'd look at it differently. 90% of the kids can afford to have this little bit of increase, and we just don't want to spend the money. We'd like to do it ourselves and save that money. Baseball is a good opportunity for kids to do something in this community instead of causing problems and raising hell. It gives them some structured environment, like the last lady said. So, if we could maybe talk to Happy Mower, you guys, would you be willing to pluck that part of the contract out? We can do it ourselves, and my business can provide a bond, surety bond, insurance, at least for the Warriors. I'm willing to work with the Storm and the MAA, and we can get this done. I think if we can all just sit down and work together, maybe we can do this. I don't know if that's a possibility.
We can't answer right now. We'll have the discussion during the agenda.
Right. I understand, but I'm just trying to come at a different approach. I understand the contract's out. If you go to rebid the contract, Happy Mower is going to file a lawsuit because all the numbers are already on the table. They're going to lose the contract. I get all that. So, maybe we just come at it from a different angle, and we can all win. Happy Mower keeps the contract. Are they a Mesquite business?
I believe they are.
What's that?
I believe they are. We can't have discussion, just finish your comment.
This is part of my comment.
Okay. No questions, just?
Oh, okay. I got you, I'm sorry. So, you know, they could get some great PR from it, supporting the community, and everybody wins. So, that's what I would suggest.
Okay, thank you. And then we have one more. Rich Gray.
Hey, my name is Rich Gray. I'm a Mesquite resident. I live at South 80, West 17307 Haven Drive. Just a little quick background, I am on the Mesquite Athletic Board, MAA Board. I've been on the board for about five years now. I've got two sons, both of them are in the MAA, playing at the intermediate level. Both of them love the MAA for different reasons. One of them's a very high-level hockey player, the other one's in another sport. MAA is a perfect example of giving the kids another opportunity to do something else. Part of what I wanted to do is simply ask you to either reject or defer to get more information on the agenda item, and I also wanted to cover the simple fact that I look at this almost as if you're trying to tax the children. Because this fee increase will come from us, from you, to us, to the families, and in the end, you're asking the children to pay this increase. It's going to be paid by the parents, but you're really starting to tax the kids to try and raise extra revenue for this contract. When we compare it, and when I looked around, I know New Berlin, their field prep range from $0 to $40 because the work is done by the city. Other organizations that I called around to and asked what their charge, it's anywhere from $40 to $70. You're literally pricing us at the very, very top of recreational baseball in this whole Milwaukee area from what I could find. So, I want you to seriously consider, do we want to be able, known as the community that charges more than anybody else for recreational baseball? This is actually not part even of the city but run by a 501(c) program. Just to close out, the MAA can probably get through this year, but if next year, if we have to increase our fees, our numbers drop, are you prepared to take over youth baseball in Mesquite? Do you have the infrastructure, the employees? Are you ready to absorb all the costs as city costs, not only having anybody contribute anything? Because if this does force the Mesquite Athletic Association in a year or two to say, "We can't do this anymore," and our numbers drop, the program has to come back to the city. With that, those are my comments.
Thank you very much. And that will conclude public input, and we'll move on with the agenda. Consent agenda.
Approval of operator licenses, approval of common council minutes for March 26, 2019, Resolution 25, approval of asserted freight survey map for Johns, Resolution 26, award of bid, 2019 road improvement program, Resolution 27, approval of agreement between the City of Mesquite and Component Brewing Company, LLC, to operate a beer garden, Resolution 28, award of bid for the Bay Lane Water Main Project, and Resolution 29, award of bid for parks, boulevards, terraces, and facility landscaping and maintenance and athletic field renovation and game day preparation.
And if there's no objections, I'd like to pull out the 29 because I know that we have to provide some discussion on that. So, 29 will be removed, no objections.
Motion to approve in gross.
Wait, wait, I have a second. And then, got to push your button when she's, when she's ready.
Can't do that.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. We have a motion and a second.
That's right.
Any requests to speak? Okay, please cast your vote on consent agenda items less Resolution 29. That brings us to Resolution 29, 2019, award of bid for parks. I'll wait till you bring that up, I'm too fast. I don't know how you do it now. Anyhow, it's award of bid for parks, boulevards, terraces, and facility landscaping and maintenance, and athletic field renovation, and game day preparation. So, as soon as she brings that up.
I don't even know what we're supposed to be doing here.
You want me to get them?
Yeah. Okay, we've got them. Motion in a second. Okay.
Oh, we've got it?
Yeah.
Yeah, discussing Resolution 29. We have a motion and a second. Julia did it. We have new system, we're still working through. Okay, so we do have a motion and a second now. Request to speak, got to push the little button. Actually, before we do that, I take it back because there were questions answered, so we'll have staff come up and give you the overview so that should hopefully answer some of your questions. Scott and Ryan. Scott is the Director of Public Works and Development, and Ryan is the Superintendent of Public Works. So, you might want to do a quick timeline.
Sure. Sure.
Or how the bid works, maybe.
We'll go through the quick timeline of kind of how this all got here. Back in July 1 of 2017, the company, BioFuss Corporation, sent a letter saying that they were no longer doing field preps, that they just, they're out of this business, they're no longer doing it. So, that was July 1 of 2017. That letter went out to us, it went out to everyone. There's another letter, December 7 of 2017. We send that out to all the different baseball teams each year telling what's going on. In that letter, in the second year, we explain, again, highlighting that this corporation no longer does field prep. Our plan at the time is to, in 2018, to put this out to a bid. During this bidding process, we'll try to keep it the same, power is not guaranteed. So, in basically February of 2018, we put this out to bid, and we got zero bidders. No one bid on this work. So, we were stuck in February of 2018 that we have to provide some type of field prep, and no one provided it. So, city staff came up with a game plan, and we came back to finance committee, and in April of 2018, and we came up with this game plan, and we said, "We're going to run out, we're going to buy a piece of used equipment, we're going to use our own staff, we're going to hire root recreational people, and we are going to put this and we're going to do all the field prep for the city for one year to cover anything from organizations, anyone who rents a field, anyone who wants to run a tournament," and we handled it for one year. And we also said in this memo, basically saying, "Our game plan is to throw this huge contract together for the following year," which would be in 2019, "letting everyone know that we include our parks, our cutting of the grass, the boulevards along Janesville Road, around Moreland Road, also the maintenance of fields." And I, when I say maintenance of fields, I want to say baseball diamonds, soccer, rugby, it's any type of playing surface that we have out there that we do that work, and it would also include the field prep. What this would do, and this contract would be for two years, this contract would kind of force contractors to actually bid this work. So, that came in front of the council on March 28 of 2018. We then sent another letter out in December 6 of 2018, again reminding them that all the baseball teams that we are going to put this out to bid. We can't guarantee what the vendor will be. We'll try to keep it where it is, but it's, nothing's guaranteed. It's public. It's these guys, whoever bid this project, of what it is. So, we put this out in February of 2018. We got the bids out back, and we had three bidders that bid on this work and included everything in there. And this is a public bid, so that means we advertise it. We put it on QuestNet, we put it on internets. We reach out to people so that we get it out to as many people as we can. So, the results came back, and we had one lucky person who was kind of low, Happy Mower. They had a cost for all the other items, and they had a cost for field prep. The three bids for the field prep were, again, from my understanding, I want to make sure I have this right for you, one is $165 per game, one is, the second place was $180 per game, and the third was $200 per game. So, this is what public, for the whole public bid. If we pull out one of these items that, from the public bid, I have to re-public bid this whole thing, which now means everyone knows these numbers, and now we're into April, and it takes about a month to set it up again, to advertise it again, and then to kind of get all the bids in. So, that's just the history and everything. I think I provided that answer.
To clarify for the average person, we can't separate it out.
Correct.
Not for this bid. It's either accept the bid or reject the bid, and so I'm trying to speak in general.
There's, there's, yeah.
Not accepting the bid means for the next month and better, could be as much as two months, no mowing around City Hall, police, library, Janesville Road, all the parks, and the maintenance, the renovations to all the different ballfields, so they would not be playable. That's just to name a few. I'm sure I missed something.
There's also field prepping. It's not just one organization. I already, we, the city already has a tournament that wants to schedule us May 7 at Park Arthur. We would use this contract to field prep for that tournament. So, it's not just, it's every person, whoever would come to this field prep. So, those are the things that we would put on hold because of this project if we would have to rebid it. I think I answered all?
I think so, and then I know, know that the, okay, we don't do back and forth.
Is there any other, what's the next?
You should just always address them.
Yeah. Is there any other questions that I, that you were, I just want to make sure that there's anything else?
No, I don't think so.
Yes, there was one.
Okay.
Doing the work themselves.
Doing the work themselves?
Yes, that's right.
Okay. So, when, in the contract, and this contract is 128 pages, there is six pages of scope of how we wanted these fields to be maintained. Now, it wasn't just us. We sat down actually with several of the baseball people, and we asked, "This is what the scope is. Do you guys like this scope?" It's, it gives you the level of play that you're willing to do. What this happens is, the person who takes care of this provides the correct insurance for us so that we're protected, and this is Jeff can say this, but just allowing someone without a license and the right, not right equipment and not following the standards, then if something happens or they get hurt, they'll come and sue the city for it. That's why there's these standards set in place to make sure the fields are maintained properly so that there is always safety for anyone who uses it. Now, Jeff has anything to say because of the legal standpoint thing, too. I also know from the past, when we have not done this, and this is a very long time ago, when we have used parents to do it, it tends to ruin the fields. If a field gets ruined, you might get it to play for short term that one week, but if we can't get it ready for the next week, then the city spends more taxpayer money getting that field ready up to par. We don't want that to happen. We want these fields to be maintained at a level that I think everyone in the community expects.
Okay, and then Alderman Englehart? Did you have something?
I want the rest of the council to know that I'm not going to be voting on this. I'm going to abstain because I'm a very close associate and friend of Mr. Bencardi that owns Happy Mower, so I'm not going to make comment tonight for that reason. I don't want to be viewed as siding with anybody.
Okay, thank you.
Anything for the legal stuff, Jeff, that you wanted to add? Just?
You're pretty much, you're pretty much.
We'll wait till, because they're, they're in the queue here.
Oh, sorry. I'm not in the queue.
Alderman Kubaki?
Comment was made about other communities. Can you shed some light on what you know of other communities doing their field prep?
Sure. We got some that the Parks Department handle themselves. Some other places, like I believe it's Whitno right now, they do it all themselves. They have formed, I think, an LLC. They run their own equipment, they go through it, they maintain their own fields that way. I believe also, you brought up one that you saw in La Crosse, Alderman Kubaki, that they charge $200 for a field prep of that area. I know I've heard Infinity Fields, which is a private one, again, private just to give another example, I believe they charge $100, but again, that is there, all there at one location, and it's a private kind of like baseball complex, which you're seeing more and more. So, it's a wide range. It's held, it's done by contracts, it's done by in-house, and it's sometimes done by volunteers. Remembering the volunteers, if it's a family member or a father, once that person leaves, it passes on to another one.
Okay.
Alderman?
I know the question. Now, the contract is on a per-game basis. Am I correct?
Correct. So, how it works is this. If you ask for a field prep to be prepped, it's prepped. If you don't ask it to be prepped, it's not prepped, you're not charged that amount.
So, if the MAA and the other groups that use the field would not want the field prep for T-ball, for coach pitch ball, or grouping certain games together, that would lower the effective cost to them, correct?
Correct. The other thing that Mr. Alderman Kubaki would say for double headers. So, for example, if a double header is run, you prep that first game, and the second game, you don't go out there and re-prep it, and that's what I think you led to when you're saying double headers.
Are you done?
Yes.
Okay, Alderman Wolf?
I just got a question about not voting, just so I understand. The reason for not voting, an interest or just friends? Because I mean, we all vote when there's friends out there, so I just want a clarification on why we should or should not vote.
Let it go. That's, that's a minor thing.
You're saying you have a conflict of interest, right?
Yes.
I feel I would. Okay, I just wanted, so I understand. I just wanted to know, so, okay, that's fine.
Is it?
That's fine. I'll let it go.
Okay, Alderman Borgman?
So, really, really, with the on, on request, prepping being done on request, the organization really has the ability to control their costs?
Correct.
And the fields would still be safe at that?
Correct.
They just would not have a batter's box chalked off and the lines chalked.
And they can change it also, too, by changing schedules. They come in, they schedule. They could schedule, you know, again, this is up to them, they could schedule three games in a row. If you do double header, or like triple headers, you prep the first one, you don't prep the other two. So, they, they can do that stuff as well. It's up, it's their call. I'm not telling them how to schedule or do anything.
Alderman, oh, are you done?
For some reason, people behind you are having a fit. Can, 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 can you, can we have him respond again, please?
I think we have to ask the council.
You'd have to ask if people want him to respond.
May I request the council to give that man permission who is shaking his head violently?
So, you guys have to decide whether you want to allow it?
I'm kind of curious, too. I saw him shaking his head pretty violently.
Well, let's get educated.
Yep.
You want to do a raise of hands?
Please.
Just raise your hands if you're good with them coming up, so we leave, have something.
Thank you. Okay, this gentleman here.
Why is this such a bad idea to control your own costs?
Get a microphone.
The issue was, when you're talking about triple headers, the city has an ordinance that says the lights at Park Arthur have to be off at 10:00. We start our games at 5:30 to allow the parents to come. Each game takes two and a half hours. So, the most of games you can get is double headers. We already do that, okay? That's not something that was new to us. Every night, I believe, we have double headers at Park Arthur already. The T-ball and the, saying T-ball games, things of that nature, T-ball, coach pitch, we do those on the school fields already to control those costs, and I believe for that, we already pay an independent vendor to prep the fields. And correct me if I'm wrong, at $100? $100, and he's licensed, titled, insured to do the school fields. So, we are moving games already away from Park Arthur to Bloom and some of the other school, not Bloom, but Bay Lane and Mill Valley, some of the other school-owned fields to control our costs. So, we've already taken those actions. So, what I wanted to make sure is you understood that, we're not just relying on Park Arthur anymore. We're moving kids away, which is going to cause some issues already with parents saying, "Last year, we played at Park Arthur, why are we now at Bloom without lights?" Or not Bloom, Mill Valley or Bay Lane without lights or anything, fences. Well, it's because it's $100, $65 cheaper per game to prep those fields. So, I just wanted to clarify that.
Thank you. We have Alderman Capusta?
Scott, a couple of questions. If we had gotten no bids, what would we have done for the city?
For the city? If we would have gotten no bids? I mean, again, one, is a risk. I would see that very low because what happened is, we threw all this contract together, and it was two years, and it was a very large contract, and that contract entices people to bid on it. That's why we had three bidders. If, the reason when you just did the field prep, that's why we got no bidders, because it was just, it's kind of hit or miss. We're kind of forcing a company to do it. Now, worst-case scenario, which I would have to say would be a very minimal risk, if we would have gotten zero bidders on there, okay? Then, eternally, this is how we city staff do, we sit down, we figure out what the problem is, we go, we still have budget to do, to pay for the boulevards and to pay for those things, we would just come up with a plan, like we did in 2018. We came up a plan to field prep for one year. We would come up with a plan to take care of as much stuff as we needed to take care of in this contract. However, again, by throwing a very large contract and giving two years, it entices people who are in this business to bid on this. I mean, that's, that's, I got, by throwing this in, we went from zero bidders to three bidders, and that was the goal.
Okay, thank you.
Got another question, Kathy. This is for Jeff. Can we legally allow other organizations to prep the fields? I know there's some risk, but could we legally do that?
Legally, you can do it. You're going to lose control over how it gets done. I mean, as Scott said, there's a protocol and as to what you want to do and how you want to do it. The other thing is, like with Happy Mower, for example, they're providing us both insurance and indemnification. So, if they do something and something goes wrong and somebody gets hurt, and the city will get sued, because you always sue everybody, if they sue us, then we can go to Happy Mower and say, "You have to indemnify us, you have to provide us with insurance." If you go with somebody else who's going to just do the fields on their own, legally you can do it, but I mean, my recommendation would be you'd have to get insurance, and you'd have to get indemnification. have to get insurance and you'd have to get indemnification if something went wrong.
Thank you.
The gentleman that we allowed to speak raised a, raised my curiosity. Uh, you mentioned that you're moving games from Park Arthur to other fields to save money in, in prep. How many net field preps will you need this year then? At, at the higher amount? Because, again, you're controlling the cost. And if you're moving people off those fields, you're lowering the cost incrementally by sixty-five dollars a game.
Yeah, but you don't have any lights at those fields.
Sure. Anybody can, I don't care. Yeah. Sure. As long as we open this up.
Those final numbers, we don't know what it's going to be reduced by yet because we're still taking registrations for the season, which starts in mid-May. So, uh, the number of games will be reduced. We had originally projected at 400. Um, it's going to go down somewhat. I don't know what that is, uh, yet, but it will go down and that's how we're going to adjust. But the issue there is, the city fields are going to go idle, or they're going to be underutilized. And it's just a shame. I mean, we're, we're going to be forced to move as many games away from the city, from the field that we helped build, and, and we won't be able to afford playing on it as much as we'd like to.
Okay. But, but you don't know what the net number is going to be?
I don't have the final number yet.
Which should reduce your cost, obviously.
It, it will.
The goal this is. Okay. All right.
Scott, can you get the microphone?
Comment to the, to the council. It, it's, it's important to look at the scope of this. It's not, this is not a singular item bid. The scope of the bid, uh, is that the three bidders, KEI was one, their bid for not only mowing or not only field prep, but also mowing boulevards and mowing our open areas was $628,354. The next bid, Seibert, for the same amount of work was $432,610, or a difference of $200,000. Happy Mower was at $204,960, or a difference from the high bid of over $400,000. That's the scope of this. It's not just the field prep. The scope affects a lot more of the city than, than just that portion of the bid. Just so everybody has a clear understanding of how this bid process works. That's it.
Alderman Wolf?
No, no, I, I agree. I understand that. The, uh, question is, whenever you have a contractor, and I think we talked about this in the last meeting, uh, in, in the cowl, you, you gotta put gas in his van, he's gotta buy his van, he's gotta have insurance, he's gotta get the equipment there, he's gotta gas it up, he's gotta put a person on it, he's gotta, he's gotta employ him, he's gotta pay him, and then get back out of there. And, and I think Scott brought up a good point that it's, it's not normal course of business hours when they're doing landscaping. So, they're coming in and doing it at other times. So, maybe there's more costs involved, I don't know. But, think about a, a electrician or a plumber, and you have them coming to your house, and you want to put a wall switch in, and, and you think it's 25 bucks. Well, guess what? He's got to run water there, he's got to put the switch in, got to put the plate on, they got to put a box in there. If you want a fan hooked up to it or a light, you got to run to that, whatever plumbing, you can use any scenario. You got to pay to get that guy there. You got, nothing's free. It seems like it is. Um, and one of the other comments that, that I made in, in the, in the cowl meeting is, um, everybody comes to the city. You know, we, we do our due diligence in, in, uh, budgeting to keep our taxes down. I mean, I think we're doing a fine job. I mean, we got a good city. It's safe, it's clean, uh, taxes are not out of control. There's a lot of nice programs. I think we do everything we can to make sure the elderly are taken care of and can afford to live here. Uh, we do the same thing for the families where they can afford to live here and raise their children. Um, you know, some of the scenarios I brought up was, um, I coached, I volunteered, I helped out, I paid, I didn't get paid. I, I, I know all that. And, and everybody, everybody can afford to do all these things. And I still had money that I bought my son his PlayStation games for 55 bucks or more a game, right? I bought the cell phones for him to use, you know? These are all expensive things, you know? And so, we have to decide where we want to put our money and how we want to do it. And, and Kevin brought a good point about the contract. It's not that we want to charge you more. It's not that we were trying to take advantage of you. Uh, you know, the, everybody comes to the city, but these are all school kids, right? These are kids that are in the school. There's no programs the schools offer. These are, as, as, as I brought up before it was brought up in this meeting, these, these are feeder clubs to the high schools. There's no money, nobody's going to the high schoo- no one's going to the school board and asking for money. Why is it just the city? You know, I mean, they got the biggest budget already. And, and, you know, maybe there should, should be some, some shared revenue there from them as well. I mean, maybe that's something that needs to be approached. Um, I, I, I don't know why it, it would just be only, I mean, that's my viewpoint. You can do, we can agree to disagree. I, I, you know, I, I think that, uh, these are school kids and, and there's no programs in the school either for them. So, I mean, I'm just pointing out some things, you know, double advocate type stuff. So, um, I mean, that's really my comment. I'd like to hear some more stuff from some other people in, in, in the council.
Alderman Borgman?
Yeah, the, the, I wanted to go back to the scope of this, uh, contract. Uh, the, this contract, it would, it would have been nice had we had a little bit more time to look at this contract rather than three feet, three weeks before it goes into effect. Um, I, I do realize that there's a lot of time that goes into it, but maybe the wheels should have been started a little sooner then. Because right now, we're, we're in a situation where we, we, we can't, we can't do anything but accept this. And like I said, in three weeks, in three weeks, the, the first baseball games are going to be played, a tournament here. Uh, we gotta have field prep for them. Uh, the, the boulevards are going to need to be cut pretty soon. The parks are going to need to be cut for those ba- games as well. And I've got three weeks. It's three weeks now until, until May 1st. It would have been a lot nicer if we would have been able to have this meeting with you in February, or, or at least last month. But right now, our hands are really tied on it. And I, I feel bad about that because it would have been nice to have some of these comments earlier and some of this discussion earlier. I, I, I really don't see any way other than, than asking you to control your own costs at this point. Because we, we, you, you laugh, but what, what am I going to do if the, if the boulevards aren't cut, sir? What am I going to do if the parks aren't cut?
Okay, we, we can't have the dialogue back and forth. So, sorry. We can't.
We can't.
Right. It can't be during the meeting. It's in the, it's the process.
We, we did allow him to talk.
Where?
Alderman Kubaki?
Uh, here's, I, I agree with you, Alderman Borgman, that there's not a whole lot that we can do this year. I think it's going to be, it would sacrifice your programs or the, you know, the MAE programs, as well as, you know, make the city look pretty bad. Let me throw this out there. What I'd like to see, if it's even possible, is midway through this contract, sit down with Happy Mower, say, are you happy with doing these fields? And I probably would say they're probably not going to be the happiest people in the world. Um, in the meantime, if, you know, the other groups would think about either putting together a subsidiary corporation or whatever, that could possibly do this. If not next year, it's a two-year contract. If Happy Mower wants to stay with it, we're, we're kind of chained with them for a while. Um, but in the, going, going the next step in the future, um, three years down the line, um, if this group, these groups would like to put together their own company, like the city of Greenfall or, or whatever does, and provide that, that level of insurance to the city, um, have the equipment, have the, the manpower to do it, you know, go ahead and do it. Why not? I don't see any problem with that. I don't think the city attorney would see a problem with that. But we've got to survive this contract. If, if Happy Mower would release the, us from that obligation next year?
Well, if it's on demand, they don't have to release us from it.
No, they don't.
Don't demand that they do it.
They, they don't.
Okay, hold on.
However.
They're thinking, the question is, can Happy Mower release this?
We can do a mutual release from the contract.
You could do it if both parties agree. But if Happy Mower just says, no, I want this contract to be.
Then it survives.
We're stuck. We're stuck for two years if you guys sign that contract.
We don't have, we, we don't have to have everything prepped.
But it's an as-needed basis.
Right. So, they're not needed.
Right. Then, nobody, then Happy Mower, we're not violating the contract then.
That's right.
Because they're not asking.
Yeah.
So, all I'm suggesting, Neil, is that, is that we do have an outlet for this. Is that if, if, if for some reason Happy Mower does not want to do the work, even though it's on demand, and we do have a, a, a group of people that is a- able to do the work, and again, maybe Happy Mower is going to be pleased with the work that they do.
They might, they might be happy to get out of the contract.
And they might, or they might be happy to, to, to release from that portion of the contract. If not, we live with the contract for two years. Maybe in the third year, uh, this group could take over.
And because the baseball team participated in, in giving us the specs for the field, what they need for the field to be in playable condition, y- you should have no problem in developing your own people to do that.
Alderman Hamel, you're up next.
Just to feed off what, um, Neil and, uh, Kevin were saying, is, uh, would have been nice, you know, this has been in the works since it looks like first notified by the company that was doing it back in 2017. To start something, the process a little bit sooner, I, um, you know, it sounds like MAA has people prepping other fields. Would have been nice to see them come forward. I don't know why they didn't.
We had a contract with mixed prior to this, and that was taken away from us, and the city took over the contract.
Well, that's when this one ran out though, correct? Scott, when we were notified?
He's, okay. You're talking so long ago. I believe, uh, bileless corporation's been doing it for at least 10 years? 10 years for doing this contract with us? You're talking even beforehand. But July 1st of 2017, that's when they informed us they are no longer in this business. And it's not just our community. It's everywhere.
But was MAA and the other teams notified? Because there was a letter in here.
Yes. And then all of a sudden, that first, that goes out to everyone to be notified of, of what's going on.
And that's where you had no bids coming in.
That's where we had no bids that came in that.
So, the organizations were notified that it were running to a problem. Um, it would have been nice for them to, you know, at least notify your person, hey, you might want to bid on this. You know, if they can do it for a hundred bucks, it's, you know, it's saving you quite a bit of money.
Because there's some misrepresentation there.
I'd like to hear what he has to say.
Yeah, go ahead.
So, I have a copy here of the letter that I, that he's referring to that was dated December 6th, that they were going to be placing this out for bid. We were never asked to get our own bid. We were never asked to participate in any way. We were told that this was going to be going out for bid, and that they were going to attempt to keep the fees as close as possible. However, this was not guaranteed. And I accept the fact that this was not guaranteed. But the difference between $70 and $165 is frankly ridiculous.
Well, that's, you know.
And, and one, one other point. I understand you put this out for a bid, and they got the three bids. Just because they got three bids doesn't mean they're three good bids.
Nobody else bid in the first?
I understand. Yeah. Okay, I'm sorry.
First time it went out to bid, nobody bid on it.
I agree.
Nobody bid. So, what are we going to do? You want to play on fields that aren't prepped? You know, it would have been, you know, I guess to be a little bit proactive, would have been nice for you. You know, if you had somebody at a hundred bucks, you know what that cost is, you know what? And you're seeing no guarantee, using common sense and logic, wouldn't you go to that person and say, hey, I don't have a guarantee on what the cost might be. You might be interested in this.
That contract bid was for the whole city maintenance though, and he is not prepared to do that. He does field preps and that's it.
No, but.
That's what we were looking for. That's what we were looking for.
We got nobody on the field.
That's 2017, not 2018.
Two different years.
I, wait, wait, wait. I got one, one quick question. One quick question for him.
Sure.
Good or bad, doesn't really, I just want to just be totally educated on both sides of this. This December 6th memo went out, and it told you that it's going out to bid?
Yes.
Did you ask if you could bid?
The bid, we were told the bid was for all of city maintenance. We were never asked if we could, we were never asked to bid. We were never told we could bid. And quite frankly, for the scope of that bid, we wouldn't have been interested because we're not going to maintain.
So, you never asked the question though, hey, can we go out and get our guy to bid on the field?
Correct. I never asked that question because of the nature of what the.
And why are we just finding out about this tonight? This is the first time I've heard that you had a company and.
Well, quite frankly, we, we've been, we've been sending letters to Alderman and trying to get on this agenda. To be honest, this bid went out late December.
This is the first time I've heard of this. The first time I've.
Well, then I, then I don't know, then I don't know where you've been because we've put this out, and we just found this out in March.
This is the first time I heard that you had a company that could actually do this for a hundred dollars, and here we are. Thank you very much.
Sure. Turn this around. I mean, thank you very much.
Leave that on. Scott, take that. Okay. Alderman, Alderman Hamel, are you done?
Yeah.
Alderman Capusta?
The only thing I want to say, and this is how this goes, Happy Mower's can be the general, and they can provide subs for all this work. So, for example, the park cutting is done by F&amp;W, from my understanding. F&amp;W is a sub to them. Anyone could bid on this. If they found out the right general, they can put any subs on for this. You don't need to do the whole thing. Or even, this firm could have been, I'm going to be the general, do the one portion and sub out all the other work to another person. That's how this works. It doesn't have to be one company that handles everything. They just need to provide all the sources through themselves or through a sub.
Thank you, Scott.
Wait, I just want to mention one thing before Tom speaks, if, if I could. I asked that question to get educated, not to make anybody angry. I just wanted to get the full sco- I, and I kind of mentioned that when I asked the question. So, I, I just want to make sure that I know exactly, this is just a small amount of time that we can do all this and put it together. My whole thing, when I came in here, was very compassionate. And I, I really wanted to work something out. The first question I asked when we were in the cowl meeting is, is, I think Scott, was the first question I asked, is if we could get out of, delay this bid. And then from that point on, the whole concept of this bid has changed. And, and, you know, um, I'm all for helping you guys out if I can. I, I, I don't know how we can. You know, we're, we're some compromise or something. The dilemma is, is that we, we really are stuck with this bid right now.
One, one comment, we're not asking you to help us out. We're asking you to get a reasonable bid, or consider.
Well, that would be part of helping out.
Consider insourcing this like it wasn't a pass for like many other communities.
But unfortunately, if we, if we stop this bid, we're, we're in trouble as a whole taxpayer, you know?
But one, one comment that was made on the bid, and I'm sorry everyone's talking to the chair, but one comment that was made on the bid is, there is no impact whether we take one field or if we take a thousand field preps. We don't have these field prep. That's just the cost of Happy Mower and my understanding. So, if we decide that we want to do the preps, and to answer your question, and a hundred dollars, we thought that was expensive last year, but we were forced into it because they had to do the preps on this, on the school fields.
And, and that's what you're, that's what you're paying for the schools, right? A hundred dollars.
And, and we consider that expensive, which will be one reason why we wouldn't have included it. We never even considered it.
But you would, you would at least figure it out that it might be a hundred dollars. I mean, because you're already paying a hundred, you, you know what I mean?
If it's a hundred dollars, we probably would have.
Okay. Alderman Capusta?
Sorry, sorry to take your.
Oh, he's, he's.
You're not sorry?
I was still flashing red, so I hope, I have one more comment.
Okay. As long as Alderman Capusta's okay, I'm okay.
I got to regain my thoughts here. Um, so, if MAA, would we, would it be okay if they would go out and get their own bids for just the field prep? If they meet all our requirements and guidelines with insurance and everything else?
Can't do it right now. All, all you can do today is accept or reject the bid.
Because it's public. Because it's a public bid.
And then you're paying whatever bids they get for.
After this contract.
After the two-year contract.
If it meets, if it meets all the city specs and the insurance and all that.
Or as Scott mentioned, you can become a subcontractor.
Correct, correct.
For them. But that might not be beneficial price-wise because they're going to want to cut a something, I would think, as a subcontractor.
Give us a price.
But I, I don't know. They might be generous and give it up.
Anyone, in a public bid, anyone can bid.
That's why it's public.
That's why it's public.
Well, that's what I said, public. That's the dilemma.
So, anyone, why would it put out there? If the person who's doing the school fields, if he wanted to come and publicly bid, he could publicly bid. He, he didn't. I'm not sure why. I don't know. But I'm just saying it's open to anyone. So.
Okay. Alderman Capusta?
I don't know if I want to go now. You know? Uh, Scott, team and City Musquego, I want to thank you for all your hard work. You guys do a lot of stuff with this MAE. Thanks for coming out tonight, answering all his questions. Uh, I can't see where we have to support this contract, not at all. We let the city take care of the boulevard right now, let MAE take care of the prep. We figured out something to move forward. We rebid this separately. We can do that. Maybe private can do a better job than we can anyhow. Who the heck knows that? We don't know. But we got a short timeframe. We got to get things moved. It buys us some time to at least keep things rolling. Just an idea. least keep things rolling, just an idea.
We can't, Jeff can respond, we can't separate the bid out. It's all, it's all or nothing.
But I think what you're saying is to deny the, deny the whole contract.
Deny the whole contract right now.
And start over, and you understand then that grass won't get cut and all those things, just the boulevards and all the other.
They won't be able to play ball either for longer than anticipated, um, the.
I think MAA could get it done, if they had to.
Scott, did you have something to add?
The problem then I have is, who is going to prep for the storm games? Who's going to prep for the warriors? Who's going to prep for the tournaments? You still need a prepping to handle all that. All you're, you're saying is for one organization to do it. As a city, if some, I got tournaments that I got to prep, I can't go, and do you want us to go to them and say, you have to go prep that field? That's, that's the dilemma. It's not just for one organization. It's for anyone who requests a field prep. So please remember that, it's, it's, logistically, it, it makes it, if you do that, I still need a field prep person.
I, I'd like to also add that denying, I mean, you guys can decide what you want, but denying the, um, bid in its entirety is problematic for a multitude of reasons, but the last one is, it's really not going to be just for the taxpayers because that, the bid that's low now is, you're going to be well higher than that going forward, and that's a major problem that I have. And I said this in the previous meeting in Finance, I had, I don't know, maybe 15 people contact me, um, and everybody was, the people that contacted me were concerned really about the roughly $40 being passed on to other family people, not them, because they can afford it. I don't know who the other people are, but I'm sure there are some. And, and I, I've said this and there, and if there are some families and MAA can identify them that can't afford the extra money, I'm happy to donate to help some of those families, or another fundraiser, but to not have the taxpayers do that, that's just not appropriate, in my opinion. There's, there's a lot of nonprofits out there doing a lot of other things that the city shouldn't be involved in as well. So with that, it's the, just the denying of the bid is problematic, but it's up to the council. Is there any other discussion? Oh, Alderman Kobaki.
Oh, I.
You didn't mean to?
I'm done, yeah, cancel.
Alderman Wolf?
I just wanted someone else to go first, I'm trying to generate some interest here, a little more interest. Um, no, Tom, I, I appreciate the, uh, the gesture and the idea, it, it sounds good, and I just might have a dilemma in thinking we can actually pull this off this late in the game, you know? I, I think that's probably our dilemma is, and, and I think that's the dilemma of, of the club, and, and again, I brought this up in the last meeting, is that they've already budgeted, they've already started signing people up, um, and unfortunately, you know, the part of their dilemma is they probably weren't ready for this. If, um, if the bid went in first before they did all that, it might be different. And I think that's why we're seeing this, and, and I, I don't think we can fault anybody really on this. I, I, there's some paperwork that shows there's a pattern of notifications, um, that's just a notification, nobody, nobody knows the dollar value, and, and, and I guess we're learning a lesson, you got to expect the worst, right? The other thing is, uh, yeah, I got, I guess that's really what I want to point out is, 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 is that I think it's the dilemma that they've already started signing people up and they budgeted and they, you know, where it is, and we're kind of handcuffed to, I hate to say it, I mean, we're, we're really handcuffed to this, to this bid for the tax dollars. Um, everything, you look at it, if, if you take everything out of it, and you just look at it from the city's point of view, there's no reason not to accept this bid. I mean, I, I would ask you guys to agree with me with that. I, I hardly, I, I believe that, and, and I, I sit up here and work for that. I mean, I'm the guy at the budget time to ask, is this a want or a need? You know? And if it's a want, we're going to put it, we'll put it in, but maybe we'll take it out, or maybe we'll put it outside and we can pull it out later. You know, justify why we need to do things. This is very justifiable. And I came in with the attitude to try to make it not justifiable, and every time I look at something, I go back to my part-time political career, being justifiable. And, and I know it's, it's not a good thing to tell you guys, it's not good to hear it, but that's why you elect us to, to make the hard decisions like this. It's, it's not that we, we don't agree with you, or we want to make hardship with you, but I'm going to go back to when I was coaching and my kids were playing, and I'm not a millionaire, I found ways to make that money, and they got into select teams, and guess what? I paid even more money, you know? And, and again, you don't, you don't agree with me, but the schools have no part in this, and they have the biggest budget in, in, in the city, and, and the city always is expected to be the one to do something, and, and, you know, I, I appreciate everything that's done with Park Arthur that you guys have done. Um, I, I believe by being elected, I was one of the driving forces why Park Arthur was even built, okay? Uh, you know, there was, there was another park being proposed, and I was very much against it, that's why I ran, and it was pulled off the agenda, because I would have voted no one, it would have failed. But we took that money and we moved it over to Park Arthur. So without that there, your program wouldn't be near what it is now. So you got to look at the whole picture, there's a lot going on here, you know, it might affect you at 40 bucks a person or a game, but honestly, down in the deep part of my heart, I believe the people can pay it. You know, and I hate to say that, but is it fair that every taxpayer pays it? You know, the guy next door that doesn't have kids, should he be paying for that? I mean, he's already paying for the streetlights and the police department and the fire trucks, and he's doing everything he can to make sure your city is good, so your kids are good here, so they can get into it. Okay? Yeah, I'm preaching, you know, but, but this is far, this is from my heart, you know, this, this is how I feel, so.
Alderman Kobaki?
Simply put, we've got a very favorable bid, bid on the table from Happy Moore. Four hundred plus thousand dollars less than the, the highest bid here, and I'm not willing to not go ahead on this and put the citizens of Meskigo to risk for a much higher bid that, that is very, very possible.
Call in for a vote?
Yes.
No, we can't, we can't start taking the questions from the audience, it's.
If he has a response to something we said, I, rather than a question, I would, I would like to hear it.
Come up to the microphone, please.
Greg Shaw, if the gates are open, the bid is done. If, is, my understanding is, if we don't request, if we don't request the field prep, we don't have to pay for it, is that correct? Are we, are we allowed then to do it ourselves?
No.
If, if we are licensed, bonded, and insured?
No, because of the bid on the table.
Not if we accept the bid.
Because of the bid on the table.
Okay.
Yeah, we'd be liable to them at that point.
Yep, right, correct.
Yeah, if the bid's on the table, they have the right to do it.
Now, if you had a response.
If we don't ask for it, then it just doesn't get done and we're not getting.
We've got several other agenda items to get to, so.
I, I want to make, I want to make another comment. I don't want to turn this into an open question.
Kevin Kobaki has the, the floor, you know?
Yeah, but we have people walking up here, Kevin, can I talk for 10 seconds?
What did you say? He's calling for the question.
I've called the question.
He called the question before you ever jumped in, which means we vote. So I'm just saying, we got to honor the.
What's that?
He called for the vote, is what that means.
And then.
And that's, is that, that's not debatable, am I correct?
No, if he calls.
He called for the vote, so you need to cast your vote.
Right.
Please cast your vote.
Can't do that.
Oh, as soon as she sets it up.
I, I, you know, I, I find it unfair, we only had one or two quick comments that would, I, I would have liked to heard, so.
You're, please cast your vote.
Yeah, I, I, I will, and, um, I, I just find that kind of unfair, I like to hear them. It's just my opinion, I think we could have, we could have finished this in a timely manner. I was, what I was going to ask for and say is that, I don't want to open this up to all questions, but I'd like to hear the one or two responses that were left, and I, I, I was going to cut it off there, and, and that's just my opinion. I think, I think the, the people had, had the right to do that.
Tell them no.
But I, I, I'll, I'll vote.
Okay, everyone's casting their vote?
Question, discussion.
And it is, uh, one, two, three, four, five to one, and one abstention. So it was approved. Okay, now we will be moving on. We do thank you for being here, and your patience. Um, no new business? We have review of committee reports?
Plant Commission for March 5th, Finance Committee for March 12th.
Okay, um, we have first reading of ordinances, and possible second reading if rules are waived. Uh, that is ordinance 1428, an ordinance to amend Chapter 294 of the Municipal Code of the City of Meskigo regarding sexual offender residency and loitering restrictions within the City of Meskigo. Um, voucher approval.
Who's going to?
Can you, can you ask them to leave, take their talking outside? Thank you.
Motion to approve utility vouchers, the amount of 101,343 dollars and 78 cents.
Second. You got to use your puncher things.
That's why I did this, it's not up.
Sorry. Okay, okay.
Okay.
Okay, we have a motion second.
Motion to approve.
Uh, wait, please cast your vote.
Oh, I thought, you want me to read them?
You did read that one.
What's that?
You read one.
You read the other one.
This was the utility vouchers.
Oh, I thought I had to read it again after it was up. Okay, sorry, because you said wait, so, okay.
Oh, Alderman Eagleheart.
Got it.
Okay. It's approved unanimously?
Motion to approve, oh, there are no tax vouchers. Motion, motion to approve general fund vouchers, the amount of 231,701 dollars.
And we have a second? Any discussion or request to speak? Please cast your vote.
Motion to approve wire transfers for the amount of 328,893 dollars and 76 cents.
Uh, second, any request to speak? Please cast your vote. Approved unanimously. Uh, no city official reports this evening, um, communications or any miscellaneous business? Any updates from any of the, um, automatic liaisons? Okay, um, with that, closed session.
Following conclusion of consideration of the above portion of its regularly scheduled agenda, the common council will need to vote on a motion to convene in closed session for discussion action relative to Sons of Union Veterans of the Civil War Department of Wisconsin, written request for maintenance of Luther Parker Cemetery, and its relation to the decision handed down in the Waukesha County Circuit Court, Sons of Union versus City of Meskigo, case number 17 dash CV dash 000606. And to take such further action as may be necessary and appropriate with respect to such matters. A closed session for the above purpose is authorized pursuant to the provisions of 19.851G of the Wisconsin statutes, conferring with legal counsel for the governmental body was rendering oral or written advice concerning strategy to be adopted by the body with respect to litigation in which it is or is likely to become involved. Upon conclusion of the closed session, the common council will convene an open session to consider its public agenda, including motions to recommend approval or rejection of the above listed deliberations or any of the public agenda items that have not been acted upon.
Need a motion?
Motion to go into closed session.
You got to press the button. Did you? Oh, she doesn't have it up yet.
Oh, sorry.
Motion in a second. Please cast your vote.
You did, real fast. I think.
It's approved unanimously. That means we're going to move into closed session, so we need to have everybody leave and close the doors, and then we move too. And then we move, too.
Tom gets to stay. Tom?